I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting, everybody. I would like to remind all the trustees that because we are conducting the meeting virtually, that each vote is a roll call, so please state your name before your vote. Does anybody have any questions before we start? I would also like to remind anybody who is on this meeting to please mute your microphone, or if you're dialing on a phone and you're not speaking, please mute your phone as well. That will help reduce echoing and feedback for us. That's much appreciated. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to recognize the passing of Samuel Harmon. The first chairman of the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees. Samuel is remembered as wonderful individual who believes strongly that the community college movement gave a lot of opportunities to kids that wouldn't be able to go to school otherwise. Very early on, he defined the role for trustees was to establish policies and hand them off to the executive branch to carry through with them, which is something that's continued for all the years the college has been in existence. After raising eight children in Ann Arbor, Harmon and his wife Frances relocated to Nairobi, Kenya in 1977, and Harmon spent 20 years working in international development in various African countries. Harmon recently died at his home in Alexandria, Virginia, at the age of 91. His family hopes to hold a memorial service on Belle Island in his hometown of Detroit when such gatherings are safe. Please join me now in a moment of silence for former trustee Samuel Harmon. Thank you. Let's begin the meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken here.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis here.
Secretary Givardi.
Givardi here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher here.
Trustee Landau.
Landau here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Givardi.
Givardi, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Starting with tab A, approval of the minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the April 28 monthly meeting and May 14 special meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Milliken moves approval, moves the motion.
A second.
Givardi's support.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Givardi.
Givardi, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to citizen participation, first our verbal communications. Ms. Kissel, are you ready?
I am. Good afternoon, everyone.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So since leaving campus on March 12, we have transitioned our institution to remote learning, finished the winter semester, begun the spring summer term, and even celebrated a virtual graduation. Now the faculty are hard at work planning for the fall term. All of this work has been both exhausting and exhilarating at the same time. The WCCEA continues its regular conversations with President Blanca, VPI Hearns, and others as we consider how best to meet the students' needs. And we have excelled. We are using our creativity, dedication, and innovative spirit to ensure the integrity of our work. I'd like to take a moment to honor these sustained efforts. Each day I am amazed at what we have done and what we plan to do to maintain a thriving and robust curriculum. And so therefore, one of the priorities of the WCCEA is to see to it that the faculty, counselors, advisors, lab techs, and librarians are supported and are receiving the resources and materials for the decision-making process and the delivery of instruction. And we understand that 2020 will be a year like no other. It will require all of us to push the boundaries of our knowledge and work together in new ways. As a union, we will use our collective voices to not only advocate for the quality education for which we are known, but to do that in a fair, respectful, and dignified manner. We look forward to this work and know that our efforts will continue to move this institution forward in these times of uncertainty. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kissel. Vanessa, were there any public comments received?
No.
No? Okay. Any written communications?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our monthly reports, starting with tab B, the personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Hatcher.
Second.
Givardi, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ruth.
I'm wondering if there's any way in the busy time we could get, I could get a copy of the org chart.
Yes, we can arrange to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the personnel recommendations? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Givardi.
Givardi, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Next is tab C, the financial reports. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for April 2020 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, it looks like, it sounds like we have a first and a second. Any discussion on the financial reports? VP Johnson, would you like to add anything here for us?
Yes, please, if I could. If we could turn to a couple pages in from here, please. Thank you. I just wanted to point out for the board that as we had reported at our prior meeting, that we are starting to see the impact of the spring summer semester, the lower enrollment for spring summer. You won't fully see that impact as of the end of this month, but certainly next month. But I am pleased to report that it's strong, stronger than our original forecast. You might recall, original forecasts were down about 30%. And as of today, in headcount, we're down about 7%, which is a significant improvement. Just to caution the board, that we really took off all the financial payment requirements prior to the start of the semester so that it's not quite an apples-to-apples comparison. But with that said, I'm very confident that through the strong work of our faculty and our administrative team, that we are going to see, although lower, a much better picture than we had originally forecast for spring summer. Also caution the board that state appropriations, you'll notice that it's still showing a positive variance to budget. And that certainly is accurate in terms of payments that have been received. But it does not yet reflect any impact that may occur as a result of the state trying to balance its budget for the current year. There's been a lot of discussion about the potential impact in remaining payments to colleges and universities and K through 12. And we had forecasted a 10% reduction for state aid for this year yet. And that certainly is in the realm of possibilities, given the discussions at the state level and the most recent revenue forecast that the state released last Friday there. So you will see that in total that we're down about 734,000 year-to-date on revenue side. But as a result of the cost containment measures that the college immediately put in place once we went to remote operations, that we are better than budget on the cost side, about 1.5 million. So that puts us a better-than-budget about 800,000 before the unrealized gain on our long-term investments. Once again, when we see the full impact of the spring-summer enrollment decline, along with the potential impact of the state aid, we still believe that we're on track for a balanced budget for spring-summer. And that ends my report, Chair Fleming.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
I move we accept this report.
Oh, I'm just... Well, we already moved to accept it, didn't we?
I think so.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Givardi.
Givardi, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Next is tab D, the facilities development report. VP Johnson, do you want to add anything here for us?
Just a couple of comments, thank you. Just, we're pleased to note that the large budget we had regarding our cooling tower, that is complete but for startup. We've been delayed on startup because the firm that is going to certify our cooling tower, they're based out of the Oklahoma area. And we've had a couple of need to reschedule them flying out because of the stay-at-home orders. But we're currently scheduled to get that done first week in June. And so the cooling tower will be backed up and running. You'll note that most of our projects on this are complete. The SEMCOG trail system is going well. I was actually on campus today. The entire trail, the excavation's done, the base is down. And they hope to start laying the asphalt here within the next few weeks. We are currently in the process of starting to queue up the next round of projects in anticipation of the next year deferred maintenance budget. And so within the next month, you will see a revised development report from facilities that will reflect those new items. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Do any board members have questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Bill, there's a line item in here, roof fall protection. Is that in any way related? I know we had parking structure and we put up what I thought was a short-term fix with just a cyclone fence around the roof of the parking structure. Are we doing anything to have a more permanent fence up there on top of the structure? And does this roof fall protection have anything to do with that?
Oh, thanks, Trustee Givardi. No, those are two separate projects. This is actually relating to around a number of our buildings at the rooftop. We need to put additional roof fall protection barriers on our building rooftops so that when our workers, both employees and contractors are up there, that we've got the proper fall protection. As to the parking structure, top floor fence, that is, we are giving that time to see if that could be a permanent solution for us. It is holding well, it is not deteriorating, and it was a reasonable cost given the need. So that's still under further assessment.
Thank you very much.
Any other board members have questions?
I have a comment, and that is, Ruth Hatcher, that the, glad to see that the cappuccino machine is hooked up.
That's a good one. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so we've got that report. Moving on to the remarks. First remarks for the Board of Trustees. Would anybody like to say anything?
I guess, like Ruth Hatcher, I'd like to add my congratulations to the faculty and staff for the work they've done to keep the college moving. And the enrollment is good, better than expected for spring-summer. And I think they've done a marvelous job and should be congratulated.
I can ditto that. I'm really happy with all of our staff and faculty with how they've stepped up. It's been amazing. And the financial report reflects all that hard work that everybody has done.
Exactly.
Yeah. Any other comments from the board?
I'd like to say a quick something. I want to thank our technical support for getting us so easily into this digital meeting process. I think it's gone really well. It's very easy to use. So it's it's just gone really well. So I want to thank the technical support people for that. And additionally, again, to emphasize what the faculty has done to put learning online and to offer digital offerings, I think puts us in play, and as a college, the Washtenaw Community College, at the front edge, the cutting edge of what's going to be happening and available in the fall. And I see us, thanks to the work of our faculty and administrative staff in developing these courses and getting them up and running digitally, which we've been doing for several years, is setting us even ahead of many of the four-year institutions in the state. And I want to just give my congratulations and offer kudos to all the people that have been responsible for that. I think it puts us in a strong position to minimize what might be expected in terms of tuition losses because we're able to offer digitally many courses that will save us such a big drop in enrollment. Again, thank you very much to all the faculty and administrator staff.
Thank you.
Yes, McKnight Morton. Saturday was the virtual graduation. And I don't want to steal Rose's thunder here, but I just want to say, I tried to get into it, but I was not able to get into that website. But I still think that was a great thing to do, to have it virtual. And congratulations to all of the graduates and the staff and all the faculty who helped put this on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
Bill has a comment.
Go ahead.
I just, I had to smile. I'm struck by the irony of our financial constraints canceling the tenant improvements that we had scheduled for the Morris Lawrence Building, when in fact, all of the programming that we had scheduled for the building is also canceled. And we have a perfectly empty building that would lend itself to the complete renovation that Bill Johnson had described to us. So it's a shame, but we'll roll with it.
Yeah, I know. It would be so convenient, but we're constrained right now. So it hurts.
Yep.
Any other board comments? Okay, thank you. President Blanca, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, oh, I see I have some remarks before me. I really don't need to use those today, if you don't mind whoever put them up. I just wanted to speak. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for acknowledging, publicly acknowledging the work that the faculty, the staff, and the administration are doing. Because that means so much to all of us. And I also would like to support what you've said. And I know I said that last time. But this, people are working harder now. And not that we never have before, we always have given 110%. Because for most of us, this isn't a job. This is a passion. It's what we do. And there aren't any time limits to it. But it's just that everyone is working so diligently. And for many of us, we have new things that we're learning every day to do a great job. Some of us are in the place of our students. Or in some of us, I'm going to speak for myself here, are in this place of our faculty that just started teaching online, where we have to learn new technology, new ways of learning, and new ways of meeting, and new ways of developing relationships. So I really would like to, again, commend the entire college. And I don't want to forget the people that are on campus every day because they have, they're really spending a great deal of time and effort. Sanitizing things now, it's not like it used to be. It's not a one-step clean-all. There's a particular way that it needs to be done. I'd like to especially thank the mailroom. They have been working through this entire process to make sure all of our mail and anything that we've been receiving has been accepted. And the facilities and the ground staff that. And I haven't been to campus lately, but I can't wait because I'm sure it's beautiful. They have been working diligently on the grounds as we always have because this is Washtenaw. And it's a gift our community has given to us. And it's a gift that we treasure. So, and I, again, would like to thank all of our students that are out there on the front line as first responders, as well as our staff that are doing. So, thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you, President Blanca. Next, we're going on to new business, tab E, the internet connectivity upgrade. This is a discussion. Our CIO Todd Kruger is with us. Would you like to add anything here for us, Mr. Kruger? I don't. I don't hear any comments. Doctor...
Here we go. Sorry about that. I was muted.
There you are.
Oh, is that you? There you are. Would you like to add anything here for us, Mr. Kruger?
Yeah, I thought it would be helpful to provide just a brief overview of what it is that we are suggesting. So our current internet connectivity contract is for 500 megabits per second. With the focus on a complete online campus experience, we really need more than 500 megabits. So what we are recommending is upgrade to 1,000 megabits per second. For a campus of this size, 500 megabits per second, this is not nearly enough. We also need what's called DDoS, or Distributed Denial of Service Protection. And what that does is it prevents a flood of activity on our website from taking our site down and taking all of our systems down. So with a three-year commitment, we can do both 1 gigabit per second and the DDoS protection for less than we are paying per year now. So I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve a three-year contract for internet connectivity with DDoS protection from Merit for an amount not to exceed $78,000.
Okay, thank you. For the board members, I can tell you that Merit is an Ann Arbor-based internet service provider. They also provide internet services to the University of Michigan. So they are a very robust service that has been around for decades now. This is one of the best price points, too, I have seen for this kind of internet. From my point of view, this is, it looks really good. And we do need that DDoS protection as well. Is there any, Mr. Kruger, is there any urgency for us to approve this now in preparation for the spring-summer? Or do you think the 500 megabit will get you going okay?
So our current contract expires the end of June. We've spoken to Merit, and if this did go to two board meetings, they'd give us a little flexibility there. So it's certainly not required that we move ahead now. But, you know, it certainly wouldn't hurt either.
Okay, I don't feel any sense of urgency then at this point. Do any board members have questions about the internet service? And what this is?
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
As I'm looking at this, recognizing what a good price point it is, is there, I see the declined options. One of them was to turn down a five-year commitment. Is it, could you give me a reason for that rather than lock in a price at this point? Actually, slightly cheaper, but that's less relevant than locking this price point in for five years as opposed to three.
Yeah, really, really, two reasons. The price difference from three to five, and I think around 1,100 or thereabouts. With network connectivity and that type of thing, the prices generally go down and go down by quite a bit. So though it's going to cost us a little bit more per year now, we just get a lot more flexibility and I think some cost savings down the road. The other thing that, you know, is we go to this online model, there's just so much that is unknown about what that really looks like. And we've talked to Merit, and if we need to expand, we can. But, you know, with, you know, I mean, in the video world, if for whatever reason, the platform we decide to use for the video portion of it, if we would go up to 4K or something like that, not that I think we're going to do that, but what I'm saying is there's so many variables that I looked at it, and we looked at it, and we really felt like the three-year plan was really the best. Now, if it had been a significant price change, then we'd be able to consider something else. But really, for, you know, 1,100 bucks, it really did make a lot of sense, in my opinion, that we need to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Kruger, is there an application of Moore's Law in this thing about the obsolescence of equipment?
So to answer that question, well, you're going to have to refresh my memory what Moore's Law is.
Well, as Liam and I understood it to mean that all technology became obsolete after 21 months.
Yeah, so from a connectivity standpoint, from a bandwidth standpoint, that's not really the concern here because, you know, bandwidth obviously is not going to become obsolete. Generally, from a network equipment standpoint, we generally like to replace that in about five years. Sometimes we can go up to seven years. But where that does play, though, is when new equipment does come out, it supports higher bandwidths and sometimes requires higher bandwidth. So, you know, I think what you're talking about does come into play. But it's really hard for us to say exactly what those bandwidth needs are going to be going forward, other than to say that I think with 1 gigabit per second, or 1,000 megabits per second, I think we've got, you know, definite headroom. And if something changes dramatically, we'll be able to adjust. So I think this positions us well.
Well, it sounds to me like we're in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Any other questions?
Hatcher has a question.
Okay, go ahead.
What budget is the $78,000 to come out of?
That's a great question. I should have brought that up. That's coming out of the ITS operating budget. And we have that budgeted beginning in FY '21.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to tab F then. This is one of our favorite things every year, approval of the 2020 Candidates for Graduation. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the candidates for graduation as submitted. We're gonna take action on this then. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Any discussion on the graduates?
No, I just wanted to say I miss shaking their hands.
Yeah.
Uh, Hatcher?
Yeah, go ahead, Ruth.
I'd like to know how many there were, and if there were sort of a reduction in the number of graduates, or was it about the same as usual?
Yes, we actually had a little increase in our number of graduates. Certainly, we didn't have, you know, we had 100 that attend commencement, and I think we had 95 students who actually submitted the video for the, for our virtual graduation. So we had more students participate than we thought, but we're still planning to, again, have our commencement in December if we can do that.
So this was from December to August, and pretty much the same number of graduates as usual?
Yeah, we had, and again, this includes people who are still doing checkout on as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the graduates? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to now call for a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting and open the public hearing regarding the 2020/21 budget. Do I hear a motion?
Hatcher, so moved.
Second?
Support, I guess, since Hatcher already approved it.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion on what we're doing here? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. The board will now hear comments. Vanessa, were there any comments received?
No.
Thank you. VP Johnson, would you like to begin the budget discussion?
Yes, please. Thank you, Chair Fleming. If I, if we could turn, thank you, that's the PowerPoint. So the board was given, actually, four documents. The first was the draft motion to approve the budget, which we'll bring before the board again at the June meeting. And then two other documents that provide analysis for the board. One is a narrative walk from this year's budget to next year's budget, both revenue and then expenditures. And then as to the expenditure side, we then provide a very detailed analysis of budget org by budget org across the college, personnel, non-personnel, and totals, this year's budget compared to next year's budget, and then a variance. So those are, those are pieces of information and data for the board's reference. And then what I'd like to do is to walk through a PowerPoint summary to provide the board the highlights of our proposed budget for fiscal '21. With that said, if I could go to two slides in, please? Thank you. So the budget process, it's, this year was normal for three-fourths of the process. And then the pandemic happened, and we added, we added another step in the process. And I say by three-fourths, meaning that our budget process is an ongoing effort throughout the year. We have quarterly meetings where we're assessing, you know, year-over-year analysis, budget to actuals, and it really is a chance for us to get a gain in understanding of where those pressure points are that are being faced by the departments along the year. And then in February, each of the VPs for the divisions, they then see a first draft of the proposed budget for the upcoming year, meaning fiscal '21. And they review those. And then we then provide a kind of a final proposed budget that is at the college level, that adds up all the revenue based on our forecasts, expenditures. And then we then present that proposed budget to President Blanca for further discussion. And the board might recall that prior to the pandemic, we were very close to having a balanced budget, based upon those original assumptions. And then the pandemic happened, and of course, the board has seen what our forecasts have been around revenue. And as a result of kind of our college's final view on revenue for next year, it caused a year-over-year decline in revenue of about 2.9 million. And so the college had to go through a number of cost containment initiatives. And one of those initiatives, including the hiring freezes and reduction in independent positions, is that on the non-personnel side, is that we also had to go back, you know, for all non-contractual, non-personnel expenditures, to see if we could reduce those budgets by 10%, 10%. So that's kind of down the bottom left of this diagram, you'll see that we added a step. And throughout all those efforts that we were able to get back to a balanced budget to offset a forecasted year-over-year decline in revenue of about 2.9 million. So look at the next slide, please. What, you know, while the college, back one, please. Thank, oh, thank you. That's kind of an elusive slide. The strategies of the college, everything that the college does, whether it be prior to the pandemic and even during this assessment of cost containment, we always held true to these strategic priorities of the college. And the board has seen kind of the details of those each and every year, and the three-year plan that, for which we're working from. So in all the cost containment initiatives that we had, we always had a sharp eye towards to make sure that we are still strongly supporting student success, strongly supporting what faculty needed in the classroom. And those things were all taken into account. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, but this is at a summary level, this is the proposed budget, the far right-hand column for next year. And as I mentioned, year-over-year, budget to budget, it's down about 2.9 million in the revenue side. And we'll, and we'll go into that in more detail in just a minute. And so we had to respond on the cost side, and so that also was reduced by 2.9 million. And we are, we believe that we are in strong, in very strong position for a balanced budget this year with a couple of key assumptions on the revenue side, which we'll get into in a minute. So next slide, please. You go down to slide six, please. There, thank you. So if you look at the revenue detail in a little bit more detail, starting with line one, tuition, you'll see that we dropped about 1.8 million on the, just the tuition side itself. And that is based upon our forecast for credit hour reduction of 6% for both next fall and next winter. And also, that also reflects the fact that we did not have a tuition or fee in increase from fiscal '20 to fiscal '21. You'll also note that both the contact hour fee and the enrollment fees are down, and that is, once again, is corresponding to the lower credit hours. I think a really important point in that assumption is on line three for contact hour fees. Another critical assumption is not just the credit hour reduction of 6%, but also that we find a way to deliver our higher contact hour courses, like a lot of our labs, on campus for this fall. And that is something that we're working very, very hard on as we speak with faculty, is to figure out a way to be able to deliver that. So that's an important assumption. You'll see on line six for property taxes, that, you know, the board is hopeful, they're gonna approve today the final property tax rates, which will then become the basis along with the taxable values that have been certified by the county. That then gives us roughly the 58.9 million in property tax revenue for next year. Line seven for state aid. This is really, there's two pieces to this. We are forecasting for next year a 10% decline in state aid. That number is, that's, it's up in the air at this point. Certainly, the state revenue estimates would support a 10% decline, but we don't know how the state is gonna solve for a balanced budget for next year. But our assumption is a 10% decline in state aid. That's offset by the assumption that the, that the state will continue to fund the MEPSR's plan funding requirements at the levels that they have for this past year, fiscal '20. And the assumption there is, is that the state had put in place a 25-year plan to get the MEPSR's plan to be fully funded, and that even in the midst of its revenue decline and revenue pressures that it faces, that the assumption is that the state will continue to fund the necessary MEPSR's pension funding that's, that will keep it on track to fully fund, funded in 25 years. You'll also note that on line 11 for contract education fees, that we are forecasting a slight increase year-over-year, going from 8669 to 926. The assumption there is that in addition to the online element of that revenue, which is a significant portion, is that we are gonna be able to return to face-to-face training at some point during the next year, although this number is much lower than what it originally was, because we certainly recognize that it's going to take time for that. And certainly, last but not least on this page, line 17, rental of facilities. You'll know a very significant decline in rental of facilities, and that really is twofold. One is that the, our trade partners' summer training programs for this summer have been canceled. And that brings in significant revenue through that rental of facilities line. And in addition to that, we recognize that we're gonna have a delayed start in being able to reopen at the levels that we have in the past, conferencing activities for next year as a result of COVID-19 impacts. So if you go to the next slide, please, there's a little bit more narrative on that. Bullet one, once again, we are forecasting a 6% decline for both fall and winter. As of today, year-over-year for this coming fall, we are still about 21% down in credit hours. We believe that there are two things that are gonna work in our favor to get us to just being under 6% and not the current 20%. And that's certainly the spring/summer success that we've had as a college shows us that our course offerings are resonating well with students. And secondly, that students are more inclined, as they get closer to the start of the semester, to enroll, even in the midst of the impact of the pandemic. So we think that our strong online programming is gonna help close that gap. Secondly, certainly, the counter cyclical impact of the economy and its relationship to enrollment at a community college, that we also think that we will see some strength from that as well. And certainly, there's a third element that would be unique, and that is to the extent that students that were gonna be starting up at four-year institutions in the fall, depending upon what offerings that those universities might have for this fall, some students may choose to take online courses at WCC in lieu of starting from the fall. So we think those three things can help to close the gap from our current 21% down, down to only 6%. We also hold the view that we are, we are still gonna see significant pressure for winter as well. And so our budget is built on a conservative forecast for enrollment, not only for fall, but also for winter. But you will note that as we saw our summer enrollment for this year get back close to normal, we also believe that that'll be true for next year, and that certainly is the assumption. Then the second-to-last bullet on this page I haven't yet covered, and that is investment income. We are forecasting a significant decline, about 500,000 in investment income year-over-year. And it's not that we have less to invest, because that's not true at all between our short term and our long term. It's just that the interest rates to which we can earn yield are significantly lower than what we have had for this past year, and we certainly believe that that's gonna hold true for this coming year. So we, our budget's based on a fully invested model, but at much lower rates. Before I move on to the expenditure side, any questions from the Board of Trustees on the revenue side? Okay, very good. Thank you. Next slide, please. So if we move on to the expenditure side, you will see this is also down about 2.9 million. Personnel is down about 700, 800,000 year-over-year. And there's a number of factors that play into that reduction. Certainly, the hiring freeze has a significant impact, so our budget assumes that we maintain the hiring freeze throughout next fiscal year. Secondly, that we did have the reduction in workforce of independent staff by 15 positions. And thirdly, that we have had a reduction of scheduled part-time hours during these summer months. And so there certainly will be some benefit of further cost reduction there. So, and that's partially offset by other compensation and benefit adjustments. So when you net all those things out, it's lower, about 8,000 a year-over-year. The non-personnel side, you'll note that we're down, we're down just slightly. So what that reflects is that we had scheduled contractual cost increases for non-personnel that would have caused that line two to go up. But offsetting that was just the overall reduction in non-contractual non-personnel expenditures, the 10% reduction that we mentioned. So that got us back to balance for line two, which is a really important piece of the puzzle for us. And I might say another really important piece of the puzzle, if you look at line three, equipment, certainly line 12, Classroom and Furniture Renovation Fund, line 14, Campus Maintenance Repair, and last but not least, line 16, Deferred Maintenance, you will note that all those lines are reduced. And so typically, we have been scheduling needed replacements and repairs that relate to safety, that relied to reliability, and also to updating the campus, right? So updating the equipment to more contemporary equipment, updating the furniture to more contemporary, updating finishes in our buildings to more contemporary. to more contemporary, updating finishes in our buildings to more contemporary. It's that last element that we took out of the equation for next year's budget. We're still going to solve for safety, just as we always would have. Still going to solve for reliability, just as we always have. It's just that updating element, that at least in this budget for next year, that we thought that we would be able to press the pause button on the updating cost. So you'll see that those line items have gone down. And then I'll just point out for the board, a new line item, line 17. This is the technology infrastructure project. And this really relates to that it's a project that has really been on the drawing board for a number of years, but when Alucia Managed Services came in, they took a critical look at it. And it relates to the network infrastructure of the college and the server infrastructure of the college. And both of those core backbone pieces of our technology solution were well beyond the end of life. And they've done a critical assessment of those backbone elements, which now more than ever before are so, so important. It's such a critical piece of the puzzle for us to be able to deliver strongly. And so it really is a three-year project totaling about $5 million. And one small piece of it was presented to the board regarding the Wi-Fi improvements for $300,000 that we're funding out of this year's budget. And then, starting next year, we'll start to get after both the network and the server side for $1,450,000 next year. And then there's two more years after fiscal '21 to complete that important project. For the next slide, please, a little bit more detail on the narrative. So as I mentioned, that our compensation benefits, it includes a lot of different assumptions in it. It does include the compensation increases that are in our contracts with all three of our union groups. It does also reflect the impacts of our hiring freeze and reduction of part-time hours. Just to point out for the board, on item two, about 11% of our operating budget is in retirement costs. A lion's share of that is in our MEPs plan, but also we have our ORP plan for those that are not in MEPs. And that's about 11% of our budget. The third bullet on vacancy savings, the board, I know they hear most months from me that we assume, at least these last couple of years, on average, we have around 20 vacant positions at any point in time. Because we are going to have a hiring freeze on for this next year, we've increased that assumption from 20 to 25 positions. And that includes also part-time as well. Because our hiring freeze is not just for full-time, but it's also for part-time as well. So the value of the hiring freeze really manifests itself through this vacancy savings assumption. And I think I mentioned that the non-personnel, that we are solving for a number of key things related to student success, to enrollment, to training initiatives that we have, and marketing support around those enrollment. And those are really important for us as we try to support our students strongly. Next slide, please. So this is another offer for the board, another view on the operating budget for the college. So this is not by type of expenditure, but by function, by areas of the college. So instruction, instruction support, student service services, and so on. And so what you'll see is that although we have reduced the operating budget by $2.6 million, the areas that were most greatly impacted were administrative support. And that came through the reduction of the 15 full-time positions that we spoke of. It also reflects in our IT area, that, you know, the Alucia Managed Service, that move to there was, created tremendous value for the college kind of across the board, whether it be from our help desk, from our backbone systems, to our servers, you know, everything. We're getting tremendous value there. But also came with that a little bit of savings. And that half a million is reflective of now the first full year of Alucia Managed Services from a budget standpoint, and a little bit of saves offset there. Another big area of revenue reduction and expenditure reduction is the trade partners. When the trade partners canceled their training programs for this summer, there is about a $1.5 million reduction in costs, as you see here. But then also, revenue was also declining by $1.5 million. The next slide, please. Also, I think it's important not just to look at the revenues and expenditures, but based on our proposed budget for next year and the forecast for the current year, what's the financial position that the college will find itself in if we continue to be able to achieve a balanced budget? And there really are two areas. This is the balance sheet, so the assets and the liabilities for the college. And it's important to look at line one and line three. Line one is the current assets, so it'll be cash and cash equivalents, our short-term investments. And line three would be the long-term investments. And I think if you add those two lines up, say for fiscal '20 and '21, you'll see that's about $57 million in total cash and cash equivalents and long-term investments. And so something that we worked very hard on is to make sure that none of our plans are going to reduce the collective working capital of the college, unless it was a planned reduction for some other use that we had. And we're pleased to say that the college will continue to maintain at least three months of operating reserves through this year, because we forecast to achieve a balanced budget for this year and for next year as well. Now, what is a little bit difficult is to look at the liability side of the balance sheet. And while the college's long-term debt continues to get paid off, which is line nine in other, and we're not forecasting a growth in current liabilities in line six, what we are forecasting is continued growth and therefore further erosion of our overall net position of the college related to MEPs plan and other post-employment benefits. So you'll see on line eight, for instance, that we started out in this view, you know, back in 2017, at about $116 million in liabilities. And that really is a measurement of our share of the unfunded portion of the MEPs pension plan in other post-retirement benefits. So we started out with $116 million. And we were forecasting at the end of this year to be closer to $190 million. And we think that that number will continue to grow. And one of the main reasons it's going to continue to grow is because of the economic recession that we're in. Meaning that there are going to be less participants funding into the pension plan, because the anticipation is there's going to be a continued reduction in workforce of employers that are members of MEPs. And then to compound that is a further reduction in the assumed rate of return on assets within the pension plan. And so those two things will put added pressure on the unfunded liability of the plan. And that's certainly something that the state can address through further and additional funding. But in the context of all the other needs at the state, this view here says that they're going to have a hard time putting in more than what they've already put in. And so that that gap's going to get a little bit bigger. And so the point for the board is the bottom line, line 14, which is the total net position of the college. You take the assets less your liabilities. And that we do believe that sometime in the future that we will get down to a zero net position and maybe even a negative net position. And it won't be because of lines one or three, or even for that matter, line two, the total assets of the college. It'll be because of the continued pressure of the unfunded position of the MEPs pension plan. And the last slide, please. So in summary, from where we first started our budget efforts for fiscal '21 and that forecast of revenue to where we ended up, it actually is about a $5 million loss in revenue. I referenced when I started, $2.9 million, and that was budget year to budget year. But we actually were forecasting, just before the pandemic, we were going to have growth in revenue, not reduction in revenue. So we really were faced with and tried to solve for about a $5 million gap there. And because of the strong efforts across the college, that we were able to still get back to a balanced budget, even in the face of that, and still have a keen focus on our ability to support our students and the community through the strategic initiatives of the college. And last but not least, although that this budget temporarily defers a couple of major projects we had on the drawing board, the ML renovation and the ATC building, we in no way have slowed down our efforts to be ready to go as soon as we think financially that the time is right, which we certainly believe could be within the next year. So we are continuing to work with local and state authorities on getting the final approvals for ATC. And we are already working on to lock in to a revised shutdown period for ML, meaning January through June of fiscal '22. And we will start that bid process here in early '21 to be able to achieve that. So Chair Fleming, that's the end of my presentation on the budget.
Thank you, VP Johnson. Do any board members have questions about the budget proposal?
I'm Hatcher, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I noticed in the detail of the org budgets, that, and I expected most of them to, you know, be down a bit, but there were seven orgs that were increased. And I just wondered if you could give me an example of what the thinking was for increasing a budget in this time when we're down so much?
Certainly. Thank you, Trustee Hatcher. And in many cases, that the increases were the result of transfers between orgs. So there may have been some reorganization of resources. And then in other cases, like in some of the instructional areas, it really is reflective of the enrollment trends and the need to add additional resources where those enrollment trends are. Now, with that said, that is all very fluid in the sense that we had a plan around enrollment and where we needed to support departments around those trends. But we will carefully align those level of support, whether they be in those original departments or others, as the enrollment trends actually play out for fall and for this winter.
Yeah. I noticed that the line item for scholarships, however, was down. And it seems to me that at this point, the line item for scholarships might want to go up.
The scholarship line has a number of items in it. So the items that relate directly to funding for students specifically did not go down at all. There are some other line items, so like for, you know, the board has approved that if you're a student who works in district but lives out of district. And so there are different kinds of what we call WIDP scholarships. So we have aligned those to actual trends. But when it comes to giving scholarships to students for student needs, there has been zero reduction in that funding.
And one more question. As we think about the fall semester, and I know the faculty are working very hard to try to figure out how to teach hands-on lab-type things in a virtual setting. And they might, or they might have to do it in smaller groups. In other words, where you'd have a lab of 20 students doing a chemistry lab, you might, because of distancing, only have 10 at a time. And therefore, you'd have to have two labs, where you only have to have one, which might increase the number of part-timers you need. And so I'm concerned about, you know, counting on the number of part-timers going down when you might need more to stretch out those in-person kind of labs, just a comment.
And Trustee Hatcher, on that point, there's really two key thoughts that I have. One is, when it comes to the college funding the need for part-timers, we've always strongly supported that need as that need arose. And this certainly would be the case here. As to that, my second thought on it is that, you know, I have been on campus the last four days going through about 100 different lab spaces. And we've been doing virtual meetings with faculty that teach in those labs. And that has been an ongoing thought that faculty have had, that if, gosh, if I have to go from 20 to 10 in a particular space, and if we decide that we want to run those two different sections of 10, but not 20, that they may need extra help. The good news is, is that the CARES Act money specifically provides. On the institutional side, the college got about $2.5 million. And specifically, CARES Act money is to be used for true incremental costs the college incurs that's directly tied to a change in instructional methods, modes, practices, whatever it turns out to be. So what I've been telling faculty is, tell us what you need, and then we'll figure out, one, if we can safely do it on campus to keep both you and your students safe. And then, two, to better understand what the cost burden is and make sure that we utilize CARES Act money to be able to offset that extra cost, like part-time faculty, in your comment.
Well, I hope that flexibility works. Yeah, I think the faculty are working hard on those options. Thank you.
I have a question or something to put on the table.
Go ahead, Dave.
I've been kind of mulling this over based on an earlier comment that Trustee Milliken made. And this is in the area more of capital improvements and deferred maintenance, but specifically with the Morris Lawrence Building. And I know that we had initially looked at spending out of our own capital reserves to undertake that project, as opposed to going forward and asking, looking for a loan. But I'm thinking we're losing the revenue anyway this summer because of the COVID-19. If we could maybe bring back the project and get it on the table now when there's... So we're doing the building, as Trustee Milliken pointed out, when there's nobody going to be using it anyway, right? Rather than doing the construction in the future, when we're going to be, hopefully, when after COVID-19 responses has gone away or been less impactful than it is now, then the Morris Lawrence Building will have a high demand for use. So instead of taking it out of service at that point in the future, a year out or a year and a half to two years out, if we can get back on track to accelerate that capital improvement project as soon as we can. And it has the side benefit of almost a fiscal stimulus for the community through the construction industry investments that we're making that will ripple through the local economy. It's the kind of idea that... I, it's the kind of idea that, I, I've just been mulling over this since Trustee Milliken's earlier comment, and saying now is the time to do it. Uh, thinking that to myself, and I'd just like to lay that on the table for the administration to think about. Instead of taking it out of service in the future when it will have demand, take it out of the service as soon as possible when it doesn't have demand, you know, instead of hurting a future revenue stream. So I'm, just want to put that on the table. And if we have to go, uh, and look for bonds or some sort of borrowing in order to make that happen now, um, interest rates are low. And I'm not sure if the federal government right now has any sort of, um, support or guarantees for those sorts of, uh, investment bonds that we would be putting on the table. But it's something that we could look at, and this isn't my area of expertise, and certainly Trustee Milliken would have more experience than me in this area. Um, but the administration, I, I would like to just encourage you to put it on the table and think about it. Um, I know we've already made some decisions to hold off on it, but if, let's, let's be open-minded and think it through and see what the, the benefits of doing it now as opposed to a year or two years from now are in terms of the impact on future revenues for that building. Um, anyway, just want to put that out there, um, although not as a criticism in any way, just an idea I've been mulling over for the last 20 minutes or so.
Thanks, Dave. Um, just to kind of add to your point, um, I certainly have been thinking a lot of that too. But another thing that I've been listening to are, are people that Congresswoman Elizabeth Slotkin was saying that she thinks that there's probably a good chance for a stimulus bill at the end of the year. I don't know if we can hang our hat on that, but they always look for shovel-ready projects in a stimulus bill. And I, and if there's anything we have, I know we have shovel-ready projects. I know it's a really tough call, um, right now to make with the budget. But I hear you.
Just a follow-up question when, when I have a chance again.
Who is next? I thought I heard somebody.
Chair Fleming, could I just give a couple of comments?
Yeah.
Just, uh, so as soon as we, uh, we had decided to, to postpone the, the ML renovation, we then immediately started going to planning mode for when the next best window that we possibly could do, do, do that project, putting aside the, the financing side. Uh, and just to, just to remind the board, from, it's about a one-year lead time from when you want to bid it out to when you finally have all the equipment, all the HVAC equipment, all the electric equipment, all the skylights. Many of those items have, have five to seven-month lead times on them. And frankly, we're not sure if the supply chains have been further disrupted by the pandemic on that. So it, it's about a year lead time, but, but the board's thought on that, it was a really good thought. So we immediately went into, we're working with the teams that, that, um, that rent out the, the Morris Lawrence Building and said, when's the next big, next best pocket? If not the following January through June, could we think about doing it, say, next fall, fall of '21? Uh, because there's about a one-year lead time. And the recommendation back at that time was, is that really that January through June is the least disruptive to all the really important activities that go on, on campus, uh, including the summer program with our training partners for next summer. So, uh, we, we thought a lot about it, um, given that year lead time. And, and our, our current thinking is still that the following January through June is the next most opportune time for, for the ML project.
Thank you. President Blanca, did you want to comment too? I thought I saw you.
You're muted.
Um, I just wanted to mention, I support everything that's been said. Um, but right now, as, as Bill has mentioned, Vice President Johnson, on campus, he's four days with a company that has been looking at how we can, you know, the space that's required for positioning classrooms or students. And the ML building, I know, just looking at our police academy, you're going to need that entire, the entire ML building for 48, was it 48 people, 40 people? 40 people, that's how far, six feet apart that seats have to be. Um, the entire building. And as we know, based on the studies that we have already done in terms of space utilization on our campus, and we had a couple, you may recall, over the last several years, that where we hired a company to come in and tell us about how we're utilizing space. The one thing this college is lacking, which is why we wanted that building um, that we can't afford right now, is room for large group instruction. You know, we don't have any space in terms of, you know, all of our, we have our classrooms, we have a lot of space. But in a time of a pandemic, as long as this is going on, we're going to need as much space as we possibly can. So, um, my comment isn't meant to discourage the conversation that we're having about, you know, doing something with this building. It's just that right now, um, you know, we're looking at where can we put all the people? I mean, where can we put our students? Um, so I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Blanca, you're saying that that's the unnecessary interim use for the Morris Lawrence Building? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. That pretty much cements any work being done then.
I have another question.
Yep.
Um, so again, I probably do, uh, Vice President Johnson again. The, is the Morris Lawrence project shovel-ready? So if the federal government did offer stimulus money for shovel-ready projects to start getting underway, has all the planning and design work been done for that? Or are there other projects on campus that, that board could invest some money in now quickly to get shovel-ready? Um, in case that is able to come to fruition? Because I know in 2009, the city was able to, uh, put some fresh shovel-ready projects, the city of Ann Arbor, on the table for federal stimulus funding back then. And it would be great if we could make sure that the community college is in a position, if that should come to pass, that we have one or two or three, um, projects ready to put on the table. And at least one of them hopefully would have merit enough to, uh, bring in some of that federal money into the community and support the community college.
Thank you. Yes, the, uh, the Morris Lawrence renovation project is shovel-ready. The design work is done. We've already done the pre, the pre-bid qualifications, uh, with all the general contractors. We are, we are, we are ready to go on that project. And not, not too far behind is the new ATC building itself. We've got one, one, one more round of state approvals to do now that the state has approved us at the higher cost level, uh, but it won't take us long. And we are going to do that work in the next couple of months here. Uh, and then the third big project, I don't know if this would be eligible for stimulus money, and one we've had to postpone is to redo one of our parking lots, lot six. Uh, we have most of that work done. We have a quick refresh on that engineering work, about a month's worth of work. But that's another one, that's about a million-dollar project that could be shovel-ready.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Any other board members with questions on the proposed budget? Okay, we're going to go to tab H. Um, resolution to approve the 2020-21 tax levy rate. Excuse me. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020-21 tax levy of 3.3538 mils for operations as submitted. The 3.3538 mils will generate approximately $60,980,204 of tax revenue. Do I hear a motion?
Milliken, so moves.
A second?
Givardi supports.
Any discussion on the tax levy rate? Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary Givardi?
Givardi, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you, everyone. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and move into closed session to discuss periodic personnel evaluation. Do I hear a motion?
McKnight-Morton, so moved.
A second? Thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary Givardi?
Givardi, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.